Good evening. Welcome to the League of Women Voters Greater Hartford and WHCTV Candidate Debate for West Hartford Town Council. We are pleased to be able to bring you this nonpartisan voters service. We thank the campaigns for their cooperation. My name is Lita Marks, member of the Greater Hartford League of Women Voters and will serve as the moderator for this debate. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan, issue-oriented organization which works to encourage informed and active participation in government. And we have organized this debate and hope it will serve as a piece of information that assists you as you prepare to vote. The debate will be conducted in a modified cumulative time format. The format is designed to enable candidates to freely elaborate on their approaches to a variety of issues, unimpeded by the strict time constraints of more traditional debate formats. Each candidate will have a total of 10 minutes of response time during the debate. When speaking, each candidate is timed by his or her own League of Women Voters timekeeper. Periodically, the timekeepers hold up signs indicating the amount of time remaining for each candidate. After each candidate has a chance to respond to the question, candidates are encouraged to rebut, responding to their differences as they perceive them, understanding that the clock is running. Each candidate has two minutes for closing statement. The order of precedence for speaking was determined by lottery. It's my pleasure to introduce the candidates who have committed their time and energies to this important aspect of the democratic process, running for elective office. Good evening. Claire Kendall, a graduate of Wellesley College and the University of Virginia School of Law. Claire has represented the state as an Assistant Attorney General for the past 15 years and is currently serving as the department head for the Attorney General's Energy and Public Utilities Unit. When not walking her basset hound Rosie, Claire is busy with her son Keith, a senior at Hall High School, and her husband Mark, a partner in the West Hartford Law Firm. Claire is also active in her church as well as with the Spiritual Life Center. Claire has served West Hartford in public office for seven years, five years on the West Hartford Board of Education, and for two years on the Town Council. She's the Chair of the Administration and Technology Committee and a member of the Community Planning Committee. Good evening and welcome to Leon Davidoff. Since 1997, Leon has lived on Stonem Drive with his wife Lexi? I'm sorry, I better put on my glasses. I was hoping I wouldn't have to. And his daughters Lanny and Becky, who attend Hall High. Leon received his BA from Clark University and a law degree from Case Western Reserve University. Leon co-owns the paper station. He has been a Town Councilor since 2007. He's a member of the Emmanuel Synagogue. Good evening and welcome to Dennis Swanton, moved here in 2002 with his wife Eileen. His children Connor, who's 15, and Abigail, 13, the corporate accounts manager for Kimberly Clark Healthcare. He's coached in town, West Hartford Little League, West Hartford Girls Lacrosse, and he teaches CCD at St. Peter's Claver Church. He's a member of Knights of Columbus and St. Peter Claver. Denise, welcome. Good evening. And Denise has been a member, a Republican Minority Leader, since first elected in 2009. She's on the council's Public Safety and Finance and Budget Committees and Council Liaison to the Veterans Affairs Advisory Commission. She is SVP of Treasury Sales at Webster Bank and has testified before Congress on the Dodd-Frank Act's effect on regional banks and business borrowers. Denise has a BA from UConn and an MBA from RPI and serves on UConn's Class CLAS Dean's Advisory Committee and Nichols College Women's Leadership Advisory Board. She previously volunteered on the town's Risk Management Advisory Board, Investment Advisory Committee as Treasurer of the Veterans Memorial Committee and as President of the Board of Trustees of Mercy Housing and Shelter. She and her husband Tom have two children and five grandchildren. Welcome. And now we will begin our discussion. And the first question that I have goes to, by draw, to Denise.
Nope, I'm afraid it's mine.
I am so sorry. Mixing up my papers here. It goes to, where's my little list? I hid it. Ah, to Claire. Sorry.
No, I'll defer to Denise if she wishes.
Okay. I'm sure you're aware of last year, the presidential election voters, the problems in voting in 2013 as a result of changes in location of sites and reduction particularly from 20 to nine sites. And the result were long lines and some five to 10 minutes and some a whole hour. And problems with handicap facilities, no chairs, and parking spaces. Given the problems in voting in 2013, what can be done to improve the process for future elections?
I first want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this debate. It's a very valuable service you perform for the town, both this debate and also the questionnaire that's published and provided to the town, and we really thank you for that. On the 2012 presidential voting, we had record attendance. It was a highly contested, very robust presidential election, and we had very, very high voter turnout. At the same time, we had a reduction of the polling places to three per congressional district, so down to nine, and trying to have better locations and better parking and a little more centralized and better balanced with respect to the number of eligible voters for each. I think for purposes of the municipal election, first of all, what's happened before isn't going to happen again because there has certainly been a fair bit of attention paid to the logistical problems that occurred at the last voting time. But also, the municipal elections tend to have a much lower turnout. Now, I'm hoping that we could have as high turnout for our elections as we did for the presidential elections, but I don't think any of us who are running for a council or a board had the star power of Mitt Romney and Barack Obama. So I would say that I really hope and expect that there won't be problems this time like there were last time. I will tell you that I was called out of work and physically sat in one of the voting places to help move the lines through. And the problem was actually a bureaucratic one. People didn't think they could break up the books. They had the staff there, they just didn't, you know, have the feeling in their heads, "We can't break the books up." No, you can break them up into smaller bits. And I have to give a shout out to the town officials and also to the Secretary of State because she immediately interceded and what could have been a day-long disaster was handled within three or four hours. And next thing you know, for the most part, it wasn't perfect everywhere, but for the most part, the problems were more or less addressed.
Good. I want to speak.
Sure.
Also, I'd like to echo Claire's comments and extend our thanks to the League of Women Voters and all of our viewers who are taking the time to listen to our debate tonight. Part of your question said that the problem was caused by the fact that we had reduced the number of polling places. I think it was more attributable to the way the polling places were organized. And when this was done, it was done under a lot of study and a belief that it could be handled, numbers could be handled. For the past year, the mayor and I have been working with the registrar's office to encourage greater communication between the two registrars, work with the state's new emergency plan to make sure the town of West Hartford has an emergency plan in place and ensure the smooth operation of the elections in the future.
Good. Let's hope so.
I would concur with Claire and Denise. Right after the election, the mayor set up a meeting with Denise and the registrars and the manager and Corporation Council to see what the issues were and how we could resolve them. And I'm confident through the hard work of that committee that this election, November 5th, West Hartford residents will encounter the issues they found last November. I think there were a lot of things have been thought out and sound plan is in place. And I'm quite optimistic that things will run quite smoothly.
Let's hope so. Yeah.
I also want to thank the League of Women Voters, Claire, Leon, Lita, and my counterpart Denise here for being here today. It's been a great opportunity to run for this position. Really appreciate it. And I also want to thank the residents of West Hartford to give me this opportunity. But I also agree with Denise. I think that, you know, at times you can have some bumps in the road and it's good that we're able to get through it after two or three hours. And I was one of those people that stood in that long line. I was interviewed on NBC to ask me about it. I think that we sometimes need a little bit more forethought before we change something big, especially on a huge election like this one. So I just think that at times we don't think things through before we do it, and at times we then put a band-aid on the problem.
Okay. Any more comments on this question, or should we go on to number two? Okay. All right. What is your vision for land use and development in town in light of the number of properties in transition, such as UConn, Connecticut Fast Track, et cetera? Does the town plan of development support your vision? If not, what changes do you recommend?
I think I was supposed to go second.
Oh, be my guest.
I was remiss on my first answer to thank the League and Channel 5, and I'll do that right now to thank you. We do really appreciate you enlightening the voters of West Hartford as to what our opinions are. Being a Town Councilor, there's two major roles that you have. One is to decide budgetary issues and set the mill rate. And the other is to sit on a variety of land use applications, zoning matters. And I get excited about zoning. That's my favorite part about sitting on the West Hartford Town Council. I was a former Chair of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for a number of years. I was a member of that commission. I've heard many applications over the years. And let me just say that West Hartford must continue to attract smart economic development with proposals that are environmentally friendly, architecturally attractive, economically significant, and in harmony with the character of our community. We have a lack of undeveloped parcels in town, so which means that the investment opportunities that take shape will have to be those existing properties. And we're very excited because in the next term, there's going to be two properties I can point out this evening, the first being a mixed-use development at the corner of Prospect and Park Road, and the second is a luxury boutique-type hotel on Raymond Road. Those two proposals will require individuals sitting on the Town Council to have extensive knowledge of West Hartford zoning laws and land use requirements. And I feel that I'm uniquely qualified from my prior experience to handle these type of applications. So when we have these things preserving neighborhoods, making vibrant commercial centers, and attracting quality investment proposals, West Hartford's going to remain that terrific place to raise a family, to work, and to live. And that's what's important at the end of the day. So I believe that I am very well qualified to sit on these applications, and I'm certain with the common sense approach that I take to these applications and the tough questions that I ask through the hearing process, West Hartford will be well-served by electing me to the Town Council. Thank you.
I do believe the town has a very well-planned-out, well-thought-out plan of conservation and development. And I think it is important, one of the most important jobs that we as councilors do. I also think it's one of those things that residents need to really pay attention, I say this at council meetings all the time, if you see that sign on a property near you that says that this property is a subject of a zoning matter, you should step up and call the town, find out what's going on because it may very well affect you. I take our zoning laws very seriously, and I think one of the things that drove me to vote no against the application on Newington Road was the fact that one of the properties, one of the parcels would be changed from a residential zoned property to a multifamily property. And I think that's a question that you have to take very seriously because as investors in property, you make that investment knowing that the property next to you is zoned a certain way. And I think that's one of the things that makes West Hartford a wonderful place to live, is our very strict zoning regulations and our people who follow through on these things. And when we change that zoning, you know, we're making a decision that affects not just that property, but the people around it. I think the people that came out, there were 300 people that signed a petition, there were many people that came out and spoke out against it. Claire and I actually agreed that that property was too dense. And I think that is what is going to be important over this next term. Do you have people that are going to look at the way those zoning applications are and how will it affect the neighborhood around it? Because Leon is right, there's not a lot of empty space. It's whatever we do, it's going to affect a neighbor, and that's an important decision we make. Thank you.
I'm perfectly happy to talk about it. One of the biggest changes from being on the Board of Ed to going to the Town Council were zoning hearings. That the Board of Ed, you deal with students, you deal with kids in schools. And on the Town Council, and I think it's rather unique in West Hartford, I don't think it's everywhere that you do it this way. The council, so in other words, your elected officials, the people who sort of reflect your values, sit on these applications. And what has been remarkable to me in the past two years is that a tremendous number of people are putting a whole lot of money into our town. That we have attracted investment from both people who have been in town for a long time and want to take current existing property on the corner of North Main and Brace and create a brand-new Class A office building. And people are coming from outside our community and are saying, "No, we'll build a hotel." And we will, you know, and we will build, you know, the new development on the corner of Prospect and Park, and we will have Pepe's Pizza. And I'm sorry, but there's nothing more important in this entire election than we have Pepe's Pizza in Elmwood. You know? I mean, that is just wonderful. But the fact that we have sliders and Pepe's down in Elmwood, and I want to talk for a moment on the Newington Road project. I thought, and I agreed with Denise, I thought it was too dense of a development. And the majority of the colleagues said, "No, we didn't." And what they were excited about was it was investment in Elmwood, a substantial investment in Elmwood. And it took a property that was basically zoned for car repair or some sort of repair shop and turned it into housing. Now, I voted against it, I still think I voted right. And my colleagues who voted the other way still think they voted right. But we all voted because we wanted to do what was best for the town. And so while I remain to think it's too dense, my other colleagues are celebrating the fact that there's $10 million worth of investment happening, and Elmwood on a busy road and giving more housing, and more affordable housing in our town. So I think that you can see it both ways, but I think that is one of the most interesting aspects of being on Town Council in West Hartford, is the fact that we sit on zoning applications. And I have never, you know, become as, you know, I have enormous respect for my colleague Leon, who's had all this experience in zoning, and for my colleague Denise and all the colleagues on the zoning, you know, on the council, because they're very familiar with all this. And I'm like, "Okay, I'm looking at this plan." Yep, yep, yep. I don't like how it looks. And I think that's valuable, too, to have people on the council who say, "You know what? I need to be comfortable with how this is going to impact this town." And I think that our plan of development is a great one. And it's clearly working because people are coming to West Hartford and they are developing in West Hartford. And that's very exciting, particularly after the recession we're just emerging from.
I think in this town, the conservation, we have to make sure we have our open spaces, but also we have to listen to our residents, like the people of Newington. The biggest problem people in Newington saw was the traffic that was coming over there. You had across the street, you have Stop &amp; Shop, Sliders, Crazy Bruce's Liquor Store, you have a whole mall over there. And now we're going to put, we have an apartment building on one side of the street, and now we're putting another set of housing on the other side of the street. I think that we need to listen to the residents because they know better than the councilmen and councilwomen. I apologize. And...
I'll tease you about that.
But I do believe that the one thing that's the biggest problem in this town is the traffic and the speeding up and down side streets. And if, you know, that was in the hearings in November, that was the biggest complaint that they had. And if we can turn around and satisfy that problem, then the other problems don't end up. And then you don't go, "Well, we have traffic, blah, blah, blah." It's like the same thing with the busway. Now everybody's going to be trying to drive all the way over to the busway. That's a problem. You know, you have people speeding through the streets. When Blueback Square came up, I sat on the fence if I wanted it or not. And I love it, it's a beautiful place. But I live close to the center, on Keene Avenue. And Keene Avenue is a cut-through to the highway, to Blueback Square, to everywhere, to schools. And it's the same thing, it's going to be over in Newington. You have too much traffic and too much speeding, and we need to do something about that. More traffic calming.
The avenue.
The avenue. All right.
Any further comments?
I would like to add something. Thank you. I sat through 56 hours' worth of Blueback Square hearings here in Town Hall, and I think Blueback Square, in my opinion, turned out great. And the return to our taxpayers and terminus of the economic base and what West Hartford Center really is, is phenomenal. And I think when you ask most people in West Hartford how happy they are with Blueback Square, they'll say that they're very happy with the excellent dining choices, the shopping choices, to be the, basically, the leading economic center here in central Connecticut. With respect to Newington Road, that project's going to be a $10 million project. It's just one of many in Elmwood. That's part of what I term the Elmwood Renaissance, where there's all this new development. People want to invest and make opportunities in Elmwood. And it's going to provide a housing opportunity to people where they can afford to live at a workforce rate. And I think that's important because we constantly hear that our children can't afford to move back to town. It's too expensive, some people say. Well, this will give people who may be wanting to move back, who aren't making high salaries, a place to live in our fine community, as well as those who wish to downsize, to live in brand-new housing. And let's not forget the fact that this building is going to require carpenters, electricians, plumbers, landscapers. So it's going to be an economic stimulus, which we really need here in Connecticut, for job creation, to build the project. So yes, I stand by my vote on that project. I listened very intently to the arguments pro and against, and in the end, I came out in thinking that this is definitely going to be in the best interest of the town. Thank you.
Any comments about the use of the UConn property or what's going to happen with the Connecticut Fast Track?
I'm happy to address that. I was vehemently opposed to the busway. I think our entire council was not in favor of it. And, you know, one of the things that united us, we then, when we had no power to stop it, I solicited some help on the council and we formed a busway advisory committee to engage the input from residents in the area that were affected, to not only have an outlet for when their pictures were falling off their walls from the construction, but when their driveways were blocked to their businesses. And, you know, the state controlled that, but we, as the council, need to help get us through this process and then hopefully look forward to what we can develop around it. Also, at the last council meeting, I've asked the Corporation Council to determine what exactly will our role be with UConn. It's owned by the state. We don't know when or if the state will dispose of it and in what manner, whether or not we, as the town, would have the right of first refusal. It's currently zoned as residential with a permitted use of the education. There's a lot of wetlands on it, so it could be a couple of years before anything happens, but the upcoming council will be one that if whatever development takes place, if it's something, anything other than residential with educational, would end up coming before that council. So I would say that your vote is an important one.
UConn intends to move down to Hartford in two years. Now working for the state, if they actually get there in two years, it will be nothing short of a miracle. And so what I really would like to have happen with the UConn property, and I believe there's bipartisan support for this, is to open up a community dialogue, to have an open discussion and a public dialogue about what should happen with that property. Because there's 1,000 options. But as part of Leon's committee, the Community Planning Committee, we asked the Corporation Council to, you know, confirm that we have a right of first refusal on the property. And so that is currently being legally researched. And from there, you know, whether we have one or not, I think that the public dialogue will probably be the most important aspect of it. And I would love to say that we would have something exciting to do with it in two years, but I don't think the state's, I don't think UConn is going to be moved out that quickly.
When it comes to like the Connecticut Busway, I think that what we need to, now that we have it over there, I think that we need to develop around it. Put up some shops, some, like places of business, coffee shops, places to eat, so when people come there, there's a place to eat. So people coming from Elm, coming down to the Elmwood area, they could be able to have a place to go to. So I think that would be, you know, if we're going to have it, we need to develop it, you know, and not just leave it there because it's an important place. Again, the UConn area, you know, it's zoned for residential, and I agree with Claire and Denise that, you know, it's going to be down the road, but it's something that we may need to look at. You know, the one thing we have to worry about is we can't put pressure on our schools. The schools are already at capacity, and, you know, they haven't, we haven't added enrollment in about five or six years. So we want to make sure that the schools do not get too packed, you know, because then we'd have to build on that.
Any more comments? Well, let's go on to the next question then. West Hartford's pension fund is underfunded. What's your plan to address this?
Prior to being elected, I would attend the Connecticut Public Pension Forum meetings and heard at that meeting that West Hartford used every trick in the book to try to decrease the amount that we had to fund each year, what we call the annual required contribution. So we're now, we went from 128% funded down to about 42% funded today. If you're in the corporation, anything below 80% would be a reason for the feds to step in and say what's going on. So I think it is one of our biggest problems. We have started to make changes over the years to increase the age of retirement. We've gone through the entire pension. We've looked to say, okay, we need to update the mortality table. We need to decrease the rate of return that we have used. We used an eight and a half percent throughout the entire last 20 years. And for one whole decade of now, we had a .3 return. So year after year, we fell farther and farther behind. I believe we have to keep the promises that we made, but in every single contract negotiation, we need to address the things in those contracts that are no longer sustainable in this, in this day and age. And that means getting rid of the spiking, increasing employee contributions, and more importantly, introducing either the hybrid or the defined contribution plans for all new employees coming in.
Not only are we $180 million undervalued, but we're also $100 million on the healthcare side undervalued. So we're really about over quarter of a billion dollars undervalued in this plan. I agree with Denise on this, where we need to look outside, outside the box and look for a hybrid plan. Just today in the Wall Street Journal, they're talking about Detroit going to more of a 401K plan. Rhode Island's been doing it already. They have, Chicago has been looking at it. And, you know, West Hartford deserves better. And I think that we should be leading the charge on something like this, instead of looking at everybody else and then following suit. This is a problem that is going to strangle us. And we talk about our children come back here. Our children never going to be able to come back here if we don't get this thing under, under control.
Since I've been on the council since 2007, we have made the actuarially required annual contribution to the pension fund. So in the six years I've been on the council, whatever the actuary said we need to contribute to the pension plan, the Town Council has been able to take the funds and allocate it towards the pension fund. And we always like to go to the taxpayer last. And as Denise pointed out, we have lowered the discount rate. And when you lower the discount rate, what that does, it says that your rate of return that you're expecting is going to be less, so you're going to have to contribute more. And we've done that, and we've contributed more. So we've done that. And under the leadership of our deputy mayor, Sherry Cantor, who's the chairwoman of the Finance Committee, and under our fine leadership of our mayor, Scott Slifka, we've taken great steps over the last few years, probably the last decade, to control our liabilities for those things that we can control. Now, contracts that were made with retirees who have already retired, those are deals that were made, and we need to honor those promises. And that's very important. But as we go forward, we have seen increasing employee contributions. We have raised the retirement age. We are making our unions well aware of the issues of financial sustainability. And most of our unions have worked with us to help us through the financial crisis that we had in 2008. So I think West Hartford, financially, we're in a good position because we've got people who sit on the Town Council who understand that it's an issue, who don't deny that it's an issue, and who are working collaboratively and cooperatively to solve the issue. We have a senior management team with a manager and a finance director who lead us down the right path. I've asked them on many occasions, are there things we ought to be doing that we're not doing? And the answer is, this is a long-term liability, and you're finding the solution and going down the right path. So I'm confident that as we go forward, we'll continue down that path. And remember, in the last year, our AAA bond rating was moved to stable by Standard and Porch. This is a AAA-rated bond, AAA-bond rated community. And that's something to be proud of, because we're sort of an anomaly when you compare other AAA-rated bond communities in the state of Connecticut. And I think that's through the hard work of the people who serve on the Town Council, and especially those who give many hours through the Budget and Finance Committee. And I'm proud just to say that, in my opinion, I think they've done a fantastic job.
Okay. Well, you mentioned about affordable housing and available housing in your previous statements. And is there anything more that you'd like to say about housing for people of all ages and incomes?
I think the property on the corner of Prospect and Park will be very exciting that way. I think that has a real opportunity, and it took a beautiful existing building and is going to convert it into great apartments. And I think that it will be a wonderful addition to the neighborhood, and I think it will grow businesses around it as well. But I think that is a great opportunity. And although, you know, I wasn't for it, I think Newington Road is a great opportunity for more housing as well.
I speak to a lot of elderly people, and I find that the biggest complaint that they have is the taxes that are coming up. And they about, be affordable to live here. That I've spoken to many women and men who have said, you know, who are elderly and retired, and they're afraid that they have to move. And the one thing about West Hartford's demographics is that projected out, the, one of the eight people over 65 are going to grow the most in this town. And that's something we have to be careful of, that we're not saying to our, you know, to our elderly that have lived here and raised a family here that, well, you know, time to go, and it's not fair. Maybe, you know, the Yukon area, if it was a, if it came up and is zoned residential, maybe you make it into an over-50 community. It wouldn't put any pressure on the schools. It would add to the tax base, but also would be able to take something, like Leon was saying before, about, you know, if you can't afford to live in your house, you can move into a place like this. So it's something we need to think about going forward.
I wondered if there was anything further that you want to say about additional human services that are needed in West Hartford and how they should be funded?
One of the great, let's face it, the town came through a pretty bad recession in 2008. And, you know, we all, you know, suffered through that, through that recession. But one, and one of the great losses during the recession was the elimination of the Senior Job Bank. And what is nice is that we have now emerged from this recession, and I think we've emerged stronger. And I think West Hartford's really going through a renaissance as an entire town at this point. But the Senior Job Bank, I think, was one of the most important things to be reinstated. And frankly, I would like to have a, what I would call a young adult job bank, or a high school, college student job bank, where people said, listen, I want to hire somebody either during the school year or during the summer, and have, you know, a place, a place to put all of those job offers or the opportunities so that our students, you know, both college and high school students have a place to go. And I think that would be a real feeder system to keep people in this community and to keep our young people here.
West Hartford is vulnerable to cuts from state and federal government. How would you prioritize current programs and services?
I don't think it's, you, you have to either increase taxes or cut services. But I'd also say that over the last 10 years, we, we now raise $74 million a year in taxes than we did 10 years ago. And our population hasn't grown. So, you know, we have to look at how we're spending that money. There's so many things that we want to do to take care of the people that are, need our help in town. And our Town that Cares Fund has gotten more demands for help than, than ever before. So we need to look at all of our programs. We need to make sure we're operating them as efficiently as possible. And for things that aren't necessarily the, the core reason for our government's existence, we have to make sure that, we look at revenue opportunities. I think the Westmore Park fundraiser we're having Friday night is a perfect example of one of our, our new managers coming in and saying, here's something wonderful in town. We need to put money into it. Is it fair to raise taxes just so that we can get a roof on a barn in this nice setting? But for someone who's struggling to pay taxes now, that doesn't seem like a priority. So we're looking at other revenue sources. This town comes out all the time and supports people in need. They're happy to donate, and, and we just have to look at more of that.
I feel that you can cut taxes and, and raise services. The problem is it's that we're paying taxes when we wake up in the morning. You know, from the time you wake up, the alarm goes off, you're paying taxes. You're, you pay for your electricity, you're paying for the house, you're paying for the water. And by the time you get to the, to the stoop to go out to get a coffee at Dunkin' Donuts, you've, you've, you're already taking a lot of money out of your pocket. So I think that we need to put money back into our consumers' pockets, so then they can spend the money downtown, which would come back into our community. And that, I just don't believe that you, that cutting, raising taxes, we've raised taxes $74 million, as Denise just said, in the last couple of years. And we've, and we've taken away services. You know, the Leaf, Leaf Collection, you know, that was one of them that went away. And it's just, I just think that, you know, going, going out and just raising taxes to say, well, we need more services, I think we need to find better ways of doing things. I think we need to think outside the box to find other ways to... When I was a part of West Hartford Little League, I was the director of fundraising. I raised over $80,000, and we put a brand-new field over on asylum. And if you see that now, it's beautiful compared to what it looked like before. So I think that, you know, you don't have to raise taxes and, or cut services. It's not, it's not, it doesn't go hand in hand.
Every budget that I've worked on since I've been on the council has unique challenges. But my approach to each budget has been understanding the programs that are offered and the services that are offered, finding operating efficiencies, pursuing alternatives when necessary, and working cooperatively with my college, with my colleagues on the council to find solutions that are fiscally prudent and responsible. This last budget passed 9-0. It had a modest budget increase, and we preserved vital public services, education, public safety. It had the lowest actual expenditure in 21 years, the highest fund balance in 10 years, and the lowest Board of Education increase in 30 years. Wow, we really did a great job on this year's budget. And that was a 9-0 vote. So people just basically get rid of the politics and roll up the sleeves and get the work done and make West Hartford the great community that it is. We currently have a group called Unite for Light, which is working on fundraising funds for the lights at Conner and All. They're going to raise about a quarter million dollars to offset that. And that's not going to come from the West Hartford taxpayer to pay for that. And we needed to find a program to replace the leaves that comes up almost every election year, and we've gone to the Bag Leaf Collection. It's greener, it, it keeps our streets cleaner, and it operates for 10 weeks, so you don't have to worry about weather-related events. And look at, folks, we've had two weather-related events in October in West Hartford. That would have been a disaster had there been leaves in the streets. So we've got a terrific Public Works Director. He's got this program running smoothly. I think West Hartford is doing really well. As long as we can work cooperatively with each other around the council table, ask the difficult questions, fund the things that people are looking for, we will be, in the end of the day, in a great place, or in a better place.
I think we also need to keep in mind the role of the schools. Now, I moved here for the schools. I'll bet you Dennis moved here for the schools. I bet you Leon moved here for the schools. I mean, we did, people don't move to West Hartford for the sewers. They move here for the schools, okay? And this, our schools are among the best in the country. And I come, I, you know, I grew up in Waterbury, where people didn't go to the public schools because you couldn't trust to get a good education there. And what's wonderful about the West Hartford Public Schools is that it's not only, you know, it's, in many cases, it's a better option than private education. And so like many of us, we've moved here for the schools, and frankly, without the schools, we're all living in overpriced, aging housing stock because the schools are the engine for this town. And that's, you know, the schools are a substantial portion of our budget. And the real question is, why isn't the state picking up more of those costs? And why aren't we getting more of our ECS funding? Now, the state has had its own budget issues. And I know there's efforts, and there's been, we've been getting increasingly more education cost-sharing funds every year. But I think that's really a core issue for our town, is getting better support for education cost funding, to getting a higher percentage of special education funding, matching funding, to, so that the cost for our school systems, which is excellent, is basically being better apportioned with the state.
I totally agree with Claire. We need to put more pressure, we need to put away party politics in this town and stop being Democrats and Republicans, and stop putting pressure on our state legislators and, and the, and the Democratic governor to say, you're underfunding our, our schools. We're the second worst when it comes to differential in the ECS funding. We're 28%, according to Chip Ward. Even on the money that was shared with us when Governor Malloy took the money from the municipalities and then gave it to the education fund, it was a pittance to what we need. We are one of the top schools in the country, and we deserve what we, what we get. We need to put more pressure on our legislators. Democrat, Republican, we all represent West Hartford. And I think that the, if we don't do that, we're just going to be in a bigger hole. Because it comes from, it's all one pair, it's one pair of pants, right? It's one pocket or the other. So you have to take it from one pocket to put it to the other pocket. So we need to go to Beth By, Andrew Fleishman, and the governor and say, you know what? You know, we approved your busway. We took that. You need to cuff up some money for us.
Four years ago, we were getting 18%. Now we're getting 28%. So, no, we're nowhere near where we need to be. We need to be 63%. I mean, we need to be, but I will say that under this Democrat, under this gubernatorial team, we're getting more money. It's not enough, but we're getting more.
Oh, you mentioned something about the leaves and storms. My question here is, West Hartford adequately prepared for the next major weather event?
I am on public safety, and I've been on that committee for the last few years, and that is the committee that deals with the fire and police departments. So I would say that where we are today compared to where we were prior to those two major storms is a vast difference. I think we've done a great job of making a lot of improvements. I'd also say that back then, it was amazing how the people came together to put up the shelters, to take care of their neighbors, their friends, make decisions that brought in the FEMA trucks to take away all of them. So we, we did a really good job, but everybody decided that we could have done better, and they've been working together. So, yeah, I think, I think we are. And I think when you look at where we are compared to many of the surrounding towns, again, years of going to Government Finance Officers Association over and over again, when people come up with a question, they say, let's call West Hartford and see how they're doing it. So we do have some real professionals in our management team, and I think we're ready for it.
I hope so.
I would just add that after the storms, the people involved with the different department heads debriefed, found the things that didn't work, things that did work. We've got a lot more generators available, and the mayor's ready to do any type of call-out if, if necessary to all the residents if need be. But seriously, we are prepared. We are prepared to handle any emergency, and we're financially prepared to handle the emergency, as we did with Storm Alfred.
Does West Hartford have pay equity at all levels? And is there, is there an adequate representation of women in leadership roles?
West Hartford management is, the council is sort of the board of directors, and the town manager is the CEO. And I think Ron does a great job of putting a management team in place and recruiting from across all lines. You know, I feel like I'm a woman who's been in business for 25 years, and when I first started my career, I was typically the only woman in the room all the time. And, you know, that can be difficult. And do I wish there were, you know, more women in the room sometimes? Absolutely. But I don't feel that, I think people need to be hired because of their qualities and their performance, not for their particular race or anything else. So, and I, and I think we recruit good people.
I think, I don't think it should ever be a difference in pay. I think it's ridiculous that if you're paid less for a woman as a man. I've worked for women, I've worked for men, and I think they all should, they do, they all do a great job, and there's no reason why people should not be paid equally. But you, you look with, when Jim Capiti stepped down for head of Leisure Services, and we filled it with Helen Turk. So they are looking out for women to step up, to, to fill positions.
As a Wellesley College grad, I would simply say that, and also have a lot of, a lot of courtrooms where I was the only woman, I think this town does a great job. And I think that our slate is, you know, and folks who are running reflect that.
Okay. Well, here's my final question, and if anyone wants to comment. What makes you uniquely qualified to be a member of the Town Council?
My motto's been during this, to be a voice of reason at the council table, and I I... I really tried to do that, to be guided by common sense principles, and to be a good listener, and to be a good questioner, and to be an active participant. Since I've been on the council, I missed one meeting, and that was the evening that my mom passed away. So I'm really committed to doing this as a volunteer, I thoroughly enjoy doing it, and I think our town's well-served when people aspire to do community service and give back like that.
One of the issues that I encountered with a lot of the residents out there is traffic safety. And I'm the only candidate that has been talking about it, because it is a problem. We have speeding through town, we have people that's texting and driving, we have children on the streets, we have pedestrians, we have drivers. It's unsafe at times. You know, number one, speeding is bad for the environment, you know, and it's bad for your brakes. So, you know, I'm the only one that's speaking about it, but also, you know, one of the things that makes me uniquely qualified for this is that in my, in my professional life and my personal life, I've always had a great passion in my job. But I've also been someone who thinks outside the box. And I'm not afraid to, you know, cross a line, to talk to somebody, but I'm also not afraid to question someone I'm working with. So I think that we need more of that here. And that's one of the reasons I'm running, because we need someone that's going to have a little bit of a different mindset, and someone who's open to other issues than just the, you know, this is the way it's always been.
So we've reached the end of our time, and now we'll have closing statements. And we had another draw, and the first person who will speak for the closing statement is Leon.
The question I get asked the most often is, you've been on the council for three terms, why are you seeking a fourth? Why are you running again? And the answer's simple for me. I thoroughly enjoy serving on the town council. And if I didn't enjoy it, I wouldn't do it anymore. So one asks, well, what have I achieved? And what have my colleagues achieved? And what has the town achieved in the last term? And let me point out what we have achieved in the last two years, so that you get the bright picture, the enthusiastic picture that I want to paint for you. Family Circle Magazine has named West Hartford number seven, best town for families in the United States. We were named number one by Greater Hartford Magazine recently this past year. Our high schools, Conderdine Hall, a reason why a lot of people live in town, were named by the Washington Post among the top challenging high schools in the nation. Our schools are ranked in the top 10 in the state of Connecticut. We had unanimous town council and Board of Education support for building a new Charter Oak building at 80% stated reimbursement. That was one of the proudest votes I cast on budget night, was to support that. We've got exciting new development coming to Park Road, to our center with a hotel, along Elm, in Elmwood, along New Park Avenue, all around town. People are willing to invest their dollars in our fine community. As Claire pointed out earlier, we've had our first new office building being built in West Hartford Center since the recession. We have the restoration of our Senior Job Bank. And the things that people say about West Hartford is, I love the outdoor dining, there's so many choices. West Hartford Center is the place to be. And to live in a community and to work on programs and things that affect our town like that is phenomenal, and to be involved and to foster that is great. And I ask for your support and the support of my Democratic colleagues on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And the next on our list is Dennis, who is drawing number two.
Well, again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and Lita, and Claire, and Leon, and my counterpart Denise. But also want to thank the residents of West Hartford again for giving me this opportunity. You know, I decided to run for town council to add a fresh voice to the council. We need a council who's not afraid to think outside the box, and I feel like I am that voice. The Democrats offer the same year after year and have done a good job, but I feel we deserve a better, we deserve better. Since moving to West Hartford in 2002 with my wife Eileen and my two children, Connor and Abigail, we have been very active in town, in the schools, coaching, sports, and through my church. Every position I had had, both professionally and personally, I feel like I've always added something. I always felt like I added something different, and when, after I left that position, it was always a better off. For example, when I was the director of fundraising for the West Hartford Little League, I helped with the building, with the fundraising dollars for the fields. And then after that, I was, we were able to raise $1,000 for, you know, for breast One of the things that we need is some of the, that's not going to challenge, you know, someone who's going to challenge the status quo, and stay with their beliefs. And I believe in safer streets for both drivers and pedestrians, and we must make this town more affordable for everyone, including our seniors, who have lived and raised their families here. We also want to make sure that this town is a place where our children come back to raise their family. I ask for your vote tonight because I promise to work hard for every resident in West Hartford, to make it a better place to live and a place that we could probably hand off to the next generation. Thank you.
Third on our list is Claire.
I want to thank Channel 5, WHCTV, and the League of Women Voters, and you, Lita, and my colleagues. I thought this was an excellent discussion tonight, and I appreciate your enthusiasm and your courtesy in this debate, because it matters, and it's very important. And as a mother and a longtime resident of West Hartford, and a proven public servant, I am committed to continue the success we've had in West Hartford. It's been my pleasure to serve you as a member of the town council for the past two years, and on the Board of Education for the five years prior. And during my last, my two years on the council, I have chaired the Administration and Technology Committee, and oversaw the merger of the IT departments for the town and the board, and the operations have improved, and the town saved money. As a member of community planning, I am proud that we are now being paid for our recyclables rather than paying for them. I fully support the Pink Barrel Initiative to raise funds for breast cancer and all other kinds of cancers. And I can't wait for Farmington Avenue to finally get paved and be done. Under Democratic leadership, we have seen our town emerge even stronger through tough economic times, and really are experiencing a renaissance. And this budget has been the lowest budget for the BOE in 30 years, the highest fund balance in 10 years, the lowest town spending in 21 years. Private development is investing substantial sums in our town, a new hotel in Blueback, a new office building in the center, outdoor dining in Bishop's Corner, a new apartment building and park, and of course, Pepe's Pizza and Sliders. But we can't rest on our past, and we need to plan for the future. And so we need to become a bicycle-friendly town, to expand our use of solar panels, to install more microgrids, to make sure our public safety functions are safe, as well as gas stations and banks and grocery stores. And I thank you for the opportunity, and I ask for your vote November 5th. I'm all the way at the end of the ballot, so go all the way to your end of ropey. Thank you.
Last but not least, Denise, how?
At the risk of sounding repetitive, thank you, everyone, tonight. It was a very enjoyable evening, and I appreciate all the help and support from West Hartford Community TV throughout the year. I do believe the town's biggest challenges are related to the drain on our resources and the burden to our taxpayers created from the unfunded pension liabilities. And I think this is also one of the reasons why I think I am uniquely qualified to be a counselor, because this is a specialty of mine. I'm, I've passed the general securities exams, I'm a municipal securities principal, I've worked with municipalities and state on their investments, and I'm probably one of the few people that regularly reads the state's CAFR, their consolidated annual financial report. I work with our financial advisors at the bank, and am very familiar with how we go about getting our rated by the rating agencies. And that's a background that I bring to the town manager and say, boy, it's been six months since they put us on watch, we need to go back to them and show them how we have addressed our issues. And so those are the things that I can bring to it. We have over $180 million, plus the unfunded pension and the $100 million in unfunded healthcare liabilities. That's our biggest problem. The town touts its many accolades received from all the different marketing organizations, but little is ever said about the fact that West Hartford is in the bottom 20% of the Connecticut towns with similar all-employee pensions in terms of our funded status. Most people are shocked to hear about that. We need to address it by adopting defined contribution plans for all new employees, eliminate the pension spiking, and increase employee contributions. And if we are ever fully funded again, we need to adopt policies to ensure we will make contributions to the plan regardless of what the actuary says. I'll ask for your support for the entire Republican slate. Thank you.
And special thanks to you, our audience, for taking the time to become informed. Remember, Election Day is Tuesday, November 5th, and the polls are open from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And I want to echo what the candidates have already said, don't forget to go and vote. And good night to you all, from the League of Women Voters and the WHCTV.